One for, one for Stephen, one for you.
Yeah.
Twenty-five, twenty-six. You? Happy mine last week. Added water, so I got past me and puts off to the side. There we go. Well, I'm not sure it's a perfect day to be burned.
Small things like a scrape.
I could call Matt and Mark. Prevent and Lala. Because somebody's got some employees.
Nine times.
Last move is four, add your name.
Do with your name.
True. I'm not. So, yeah. Yes. So I go back. Who's was there and was watching where they come.
It's Sunday.
I was like, I saw you twice.
Just some charade.
Wow. I have a whole bunch of that. Other lenses. That's not really. I don't know that. My place can do. Scary fair. Grasp my. I mean acres by ocean. I just, I don't know what. I started the show and you have to go on the left. Oh, yeah.
I don't find you. I did. Um, only one is so funny request from.
Oh, you have anyone too.
Eight one, no, I think, yes, you said this June. One discussion on. I was about seven eighteen. Sheriff is recommending.
So you're done.
The seven eighteen. Yeah, so the sheriff.
Oh, yeah.
Numbers of my, uh, negotiations. Such as they are.
I was very surprised.
I'm down.
Yeah. Michael.
Every day. Five, seven, eight.
Well. Discuss. Starting a little early, you know, for tomorrow.
Yeah. I mean, totally sense like. Actually, we've been the same. No, she was. That's good.
Just stare at him.
Yeah.
Like, but you're in luck. But I think.
Maybe you can. About it. More personal.
Let me voice. In your hand.
Sure. Yeah, and everything should be.
Yeah.
But.
This will be a lot of such.
On my driveway.
He understands everything I'm saying, you know.
Yeah.
Right now, pretty good. Still stretching.
See. I'm sure. But.
Yeah, they returned. They don't. It was near someone, but now.
One break to have some backup. I was getting bitch like some.
Little.
Okay, I'll take it.
I spent a week. So much as you. Yes. I've got a shot sharing. Remember.
I'm trying all these. I made it up yesterday. Seeing everyone. At.
And. Fire in the head.
That's a. Well, look at. What the? Yes.
With the.
No.
Still injection.
I watch it. I don't know.
And so.
I. Yeah, I was.
Did mine. Yeah.
No idea.
Just the ones.
I have two. I disagree with. Okay. How much? I mean, there's a lot.
Well, because if it's a, like, silent.
Morning.
I probably would be. Oh, my wife has. You had to be kind of. Maryland.
I see on the agenda, there is nothing about getting sound into the folding chair area. And I would like overtime for you to get something on the agenda to get us sound so we can hear. Now, you're going to put. I'm going to take those magical things and sit with them in this room. But they are not the solution to a sound in this room.
It's nine thirty. All those are so choose. We stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All the meeting to order. The meeting is being recorded. If it is not to be recorded, please leave. This time on the agenda is Mary's, my affiliate, about ten here with some old matters. Go ahead, Mike.
Right. Sent a. Sent the report out this morning. It's a little bit shorter than normal. It's not for lack of work. First thing I got on this line here is the Lashaw County has a final race grant. About fourteen south of Florida. Submitted project. The service bureau will submit to the federal government on January twenty ninth. I was informed over the weekend on that that the grant has actually changed name to build the grant with the new. President in the administration. So what that means materially for us is absolutely nothing. I have an email I can forward on to you if you're interested in the extent of what I know. So that, that's what I have on that. The railroad flat car bridge study coordination is continuing to occur. The DOT has tentatively supported our approach doing only two vote test rather than testing every bridge. News. So that's over there. I have to start now coordinating when, when they'll come in and when our guys will be available for them. Subdivision stuff is same as last week, which is the same as last month. I will be working on that. And I see proceed nasty value coming to a conclusion and getting right into the subdivision data project. The upcoming union negotiations are set for January twenty eighth. Bridgeway shop improvements is continued. Boiler installation. Marv Smith is supposed to be coming in. I have not heard yet when he will be in, so.
What all the other improvements, the installation.
That is the word that I have. I haven't gone up there and seen it, but I think that's the case, yes. Then Friday, I met with the crew leaders, the crew foreman and the technical staff. Like Mike and Matt, if you will. To coordinate the maintenance activities for calendar year twenty, two thousand twenty-five. I emailed you a map of all of our anticipated activities. So I emailed it just really recently. So check on that when you get a chance and let me know if you have any concerns or if you have any desires to do something additional. But that's, that's what we foresee for this coming year.
You sent one out earlier to on the, on project. That was.
I might have sent out the one that I sent weeks ago. Yeah, I sent the one out. It's coordinated with the, to the, with the DOT. This has all of that information plus the discussions that we had in the Friday meeting. So you will have that. And then. Um, one of the things I wanted to bring up was Frankville Road Project. In the programming, there was a grant associated with it. That is, I have no. Record of any grants that are being tied to it. So I will be in, I will end up using farm and market funds to cover what was programmed as grant funding for that. So.
How do I get wrote down or somebody just?
We have, we have the, the farm and market balance.
But no, I mean, the grant word.
I have no idea where it came from and I, speaking with staff, it just, that was the, the hope and it was never, it never. So.
I don't remember anything being reported here.
It was.
Either on that, so.
So, and, and I, and I talked to the DOT. I talked to our staffs. Just and talked to. Non existent as far as anybody can tell, so I.
Was there a portion of that road that was, is in the federal. Road money. I forget the difference that. W. There's federal road money that, or federal aid routes.
Yeah.
That road is federal aid and then part, the rest will be farm to market.
That was the idea, I think, was to get some kind of grant for that. I, if I was supposed to be doing that, I would never informed of that, so I.
Oh, I don't know if it was a grant. It's our.
It's listed as a grant in the program.
Okay.
So that's why, that's why I'm telling you it's a grant. If, if that's not exactly accurate, I can look into it further.
I think that we have some rods that are federal aid roads. They're federally eligible and I think that road was on that list.
That it would be on that list.
And that there is money that's just part of our normal allotment for federal aid routes.
I'll be completely honest, I don't know what that program is.
Okay, so that's the difference. It's probably not a specific grant. It's probably was supposed to be. Some of the money is supposed to come from our federal aid account.
Okay, I will look into the federal, federal aid accounts. That's, and I'm.
Lot of times we use that on bridges on those roads, but sometimes we use them when we're doing paving projects on those roads.
There is a highway bridge program.
That's, well, no.
That's not, it shouldn't be. It's not, definitely not that because we couldn't.
No.
So. I can, I can look into that. It's not something that was ever in my training as, as far as I can tell, but. I, I will look harder down that.
FHWA, it's that, the name, those are the right letters.
That is, yeah, federal highway administration. So. I can look into that, but I just wanted to let you know that I've. Programming everything out. I want to make sure that Frankville Road does get done. And that's what I'm having, having to deal with right now. So I will look into.
Yeah, ask, yeah, some other county engineer about how you, what you use FHWA. If we have money that isn't grant related, it's just our allotment that can go to paving projects rather than bridges. You know, that seemed to me there was some, sometimes we have roads. We don't have very many federal aid roads, but when we do have some, we do utilize federal monies.
I will, I will look into that further. The other thing I wanted to say, and this is just FYI, as I was programming. Uh, our farm to market allocations and. I'm not, I don't know the ins and outs on a state level. Of how that works, but I can tell you that our farm and market allocations are actually going down from last year. From what, for what we're receiving and then I can also. There, there's also the case for the highway bridge program. So. It does, the, the amount has gone down, it's not changed anything. But I don't think, I don't think that they necessarily going to be a trend going forward.
We get about seven hundred and fifty thousand or something here from, of, of.
Bridge program.
No, what am I trying to say? Our, our share of, or no, it's one point four million, that's like half. One point four million is our share of for farm to market each year. Is that about right?
That is about right and it was, it was down just very small amount.
And we basically save it up and do project, bigger projects every few years.
Such as Frank, Frankville, and then I'm going to have to protect the W forty-two and the W fourteen south project to get the race grant. So a lot of stuff's going to be. Moved around potentially. But. That's kind of some of the things that I've been working on this week. Wanted to keep you all informed and all of that. The report's small, but like I said, there's, there's a lot in, in the week that happened. That's just not really a fine item.
Is there anything we can do when you talk about Frankville Road and Patrick's called crossings and B thirty-two going to Costana?
So.
The one side isn't bad, the other side is really bad.
I have not driven them, but I, the, we are anticipating putting, uh, going in with River City and, and, and getting those up to. Getting them smoother, smoothened out and then B thirty-two, we want to do that for the out of steel project that we have come, upcoming. And then on Frankville, we want to do that because that'll be a, that'll help out on the cold in place process. In the, in the future and that has to last quite a while, so.
B thirty-two, the out of steel will happen this.
That is, that it is on track for that, yes. So, and then I would like to use some of that also to perhaps pave that intersection, that dangerous intersection, section of the curve. So I have had that discussion. So. Yeah.
And was that all B thirty-two from Oshin all the way to Ford?
Yes, there was a discussion about doing one or the other. Right now I have in the program, the projects for stretches. This will twenty twenty-six, which is July. It's in that program for them.
Sounds good.
So.
Is it possible for you guys to produce another map similar to this one? That we keep updated on the wall so the public can see where the projects are scheduled for twenty twenty-five?
For the calendar year twenty twenty-five? Is possible. Um, let me. Keep talking to me about that because I, I would like to make that possible on the website.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Um, and perhaps just have the GIS. Outfit, keep that map up to date that way. So just, I would like to do that, but that's usually handled by our staff and right now they're busy. So.
That'd be great.
Trying to change the staffing on who handles that would be better. Any, anything else?
Chuck Hubert, and I was wondering if you did, I had talked to before about. Three that are in the ditch. Focused. It's about a hundred yards from the road. And you were going to send a letter. I think it's Tom Hanson's land. Kind of knew that's the way they're going from down in the ditch, so they could end up. Locking that color. And I don't know who would be responsible for cleaning that out. Easier to take care of now.
Um, I, I do remember, I only recognized space, didn't associate the face with the issue and I remember that. I don't, I, I don't recall right now how we had decided that we were going to handle this. Let me talk, let me just have a discussion again with my superintendent and. Chuck, if, if you want to just email me and I can get back to you on that SAP, okay? Thank you.
Anything else for Mike?
I had thirty minutes if you needed.
We have our union negotiations tomorrow, one thirty.
Yes.
Possibly like one fifteen-ish.
I can come in at one.
Just kind of go over things quick.
I've kept that whole afternoon available, so. I know the race grant stuff, I have a meeting this afternoon online and then Wednesday. So, because that's due this week, but.
Sure. No, I, I just think we meet fifteen minutes before we'll just go over.
Okay. Yep, perfect.
Sounds good.
All right, well. Thank you. Yep.
Consent agenda?
Got the minutes, the claim. And a liquor license for harvest farm campground.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Do, we have a little bit of time. Can you give us a little bit of time to read through the rest of the claims?
Question on claims, dude. This almost nine thousand dollars MGB EPA, it's like very fun.
Network, that's our weekly transfer for payments for our side health insurance. Yeah, we do those every week.
The puzzle. But I'll deal with. Mark, Mark, Mark Bowden, you have, I see a, see a recycle. Expense, this seems a little.
Bad training?
No, it's a. Yeah, that one. Oh, there it is. The recycling certification training, yeah, twenty-seven hundred.
I don't know what it means with the. As for the chemicals.
Oh, they could, but that's.
That's a lot of money for.
Yeah. I'll have to check on that. In our, our next schedule travels on there. I don't understand that one at all.
Had to find a copy of the invoice and see if it gives some more information since you have a few notes anyway.
Yes, uh, two of them did get certified.
That might have like a names or where they.
That was an online training. I can't imagine two thousand plus dollar bill.
No, I know, I saw that.
That, that seems really.
Check, I mean, pay up to who was made payable. It should say there.
It's to SCS engineers.
If they can find.
I was going to ask about that.
I don't want to look for. Jail. Thirty-six hundred dollars in electric dollars. Let's see. Relatively small. I mean, the gas is up, but I don't know why the electric. You know, right off. Anyway. I guess I. Seems like it jumped out. That's. Easy to.
Wouldn't it last a week, two months?
Well, that's the whole thing.
That's the reason before. I.
With the sheriff, maybe a recom yearly, annually, or? That's five, two thousand months.
So that'd be a, and, and.
There would be, or it could be a special project where they have some outfit vehicle outfitted or something like that. It started with a town.
Exactly.
Well, now you can start just going certain path.
SCS engineers. Pious demanufacturing. Pious demanufacturing certification.
No, that's training.
Professional services from. For one month in December, certification.
Training.
Yeah.
Well, Scott was up. So that was when Scott was still there.
December.
What a kind of training.
Yeah. Appliance, demanufacturing training.
Demanufacturing training. We only had.
He claimed it. He claimed they all got.
We had Evan and. Who higher went through that and I'm not sure about if the others attended or not, Mark. Let's find that out. Copy of it. Make a copy when they ask you. And Ben, I had a question in our twenty-eight E agreement over the DHS.
You're going back and line it.
On that twenty-eight E agreement on, on DHS. I noticed that in an old note I happened to stumble across in the closet. This is an old file.
Yeah.
That it says thirty-five to forty percent from state.
Yeah.
We actually, if, if they decide to is what I read out of the code.
Yeah, yeah. So we submit all of the bills to them and I don't know.
But wow, that's it.
How the formula works or what they decide to reimburse, but they do reimburse some and then the remainder, we bill the other counties for their ten percent shares.
Seven game.
Ten percent of what's.
Seven.
But there's been some kind of.
My Bitcoin down there.
We have had, the state has not reimbursed any since before July. So we think that the DHS reorganization, we don't know if somebody's failed to get assigned that duty or. Get assigned that duty or what, we've been working with our local people and they said they keep sending them in, but nobody's sending us any money for their share yet, so. You got a copy of this?
There's, there is a twenty eighty agreement for the D H S that I found in the closet over there.
I've kind of made the motion.
All those in favor, say aye. Both same side. Committee reports. It's a conference board. This public hearing for the twentieth of February. Training today.
Just go back for a second, what were you guys just saying so that the public knows?
We set the public hearing for the conference board. February twentieth at six o'clock in the morning.
Conference board is the assessors board meeting. We're development had annual semi-annual signing training on requirements of one stop shop. Very enthralling for two hours.
Upper Explorer Land. Little white sheds she had there sitting there, she didn't know they own, the other one was down. You never realize they own other little white sheds, oh, we. What to do with that? They didn't show on her, had to be showing the property. Guy come along to buy a few feet of that shed and.
We're gonna look into the value of that and beside whether or not to sell it to the private owner next door. Uh, behavioral health last week as well, the conference board meeting, first floor land and that was the others. It's a busy week. This week, a couple of us are heading down to Des Moines for a few days where I said supervisors.
That just Thursday.
And Wednesday night.
I've got a hot committee at one today.
Nothing really to update on the community services building.
Like normal, they never get back to you, it takes a month before they respond.
There is painting going on under it, but other than that.
Yeah, they determined which desks are getting moved and which ones are.
We're just gonna start moving when we get the okay and to start moving them.
If it's at all possible, we gotta try to see how well they fit into the main area, which I. I cannot imagine that they can't fit them in there, it's every time I talk to John Halverson, it's the number of staffs that are involved in that building.
We gotta go by with what they say, cause.
I know what the code says, I've been, I've been researching. But they have, but we have to, but we can give limits as to what we, there's some latitude we have, what we can do in that, we can do some pushback. As we've got, if we look at that space over there, we've got. Toys or us expands into whatever they can use. Back comes expands into everything we can use, so we got nothing left.
Only room for the H H S.
Oh, more than enough, we're gonna just the, the main part we first talked about.
Ah, they won't fit in that.
I think if we go into this with positive partnership attitudes, I think it'll work out really well with everybody, including toy lending library. Food pantry, D H S, I think it'll work out very well, spectrum.
There's no reason.
Right.
And H H S is very excited to make.
Getting going.
Well, we did have uh. Steve. The applications for the managers, the recycling are, is closed down.
Yeah.
I think we have seven applicants. We got a few more.
Few more.
One at the very end of the day, so I didn't get it scanned and emailed until this morning, but, but the seven, all seven were by Friday.
So hopefully we can. Maybe commit and decide how many we're gonna interview and then set up. Last time I think the whole board interviewed for that, so I think we'll probably do the same thing again this time. Uh, hopefully maybe later this week.
If there are any changes to the questions, we ask them to me and I'll update that document, but otherwise I have the document on my computer for the questions.
The only change would be the requirement for the class A driver for the manager. Or the ability to secure and obtain.
The change in the job description, yeah.
Change the job description.
So, uh, anyway, I guess.
I think we'll try to, maybe we try to get together.
I don't, I don't know. Seven, but I think probably.
I think we should take, you and I and T J should review them either tomorrow or today, tomorrow or when.
So, that's exciting. There's good applicants too. Very good.
And perhaps we could send an interview. If we meet this week and send an interview for the first next week.
Yeah, the uh job description had changed in this time advertising than last, so.
We actually made it tougher and made them way applicants. Sense that makes.
So, it's good.
Shouldn't we decide what the next week, we'd want our interviews aboard Monday after our morning meeting? Or Friday evening?
Monday afternoon and evening work. Depends on how many we do and when people can get off of their work or afterwards.
I have to date my Sunday orthodontist appointment Monday afternoon, so I couldn't be here to do the recording Monday afternoon. So maybe after.
We could do Tuesday, Wednesday.
There's always something better.
Tuesday afternoon is open for me, Wednesday is not. Thursday is. Friday is.
Mark and Dan, do you have a day that would work better or worse? Of Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday?
Yeah, I think Tuesday would probably.
Tuesday be best. Wednesday is nine, one, one at six.
I see, we can't try to do Tuesday. Majority of them get here then.
Yeah, we can do it during afternoon hours, I've got evening meetings Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, city council meetings.
We may have to pick a, some evenings to do them too, at people's work schedules.
Frank, he just said he has it available Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday evenings, but.
Yeah, we could any other time, but uh Thursday evening would be after the fact, but those are the days.
All right, it's ten o'clock, next item on the agenda, the Michigan Soil and Water Conservation District, let me do it first.
I think hopefully you know, I'm on the commission around the soil and water conservation district board, you guys both wanna come around this place to the audience.
Sounds great.
Thank you.
This is uh handouts here. Certainly for all of you and what was like. I can get a few.
So we come uh once a year uh to request of allocation for Bear Creek watershed. For the flagrant structures that were installed there. I think they started in two thousand, the year two thousand and were put in with public law. P L five sixty-six funds and also in two thousand and, well, two thousand and ten, there was. Funds again from the American Recovery Act that allowed more construction of these structures. There are nineteen of them in all, twelve of them are in Iowa, on the Iowa side of the watershed. Seven in, in Minnesota. And they treat about thirty-five percent of the watershed. There's plant, there are planned structures, uh, I think a total of fifty-two if I, if my notes are correct and. About ten or fifteen of them are feasible to be installed if funding were to become available again. I have a personal interest that we, my brother and I, my family, I want to farm up on the, on the state line and it's North Bear Creek. Uh, the fish, fishing easement for that starts on our property with the large springs that are there and we have two structures on our, our land. I know that in the past I've heard from the county engineer that. They felt that the structures in this watershed have greatly reduced the road damages in that watershed and downstream from there, so. In twenty twenty-one, there was a study done and I think it was a dollar and ten return on every dollar that was spent there, so it's a. It's been a, a return on investment that's been pretty good. So, our, our request is for five thousand dollars, this gets put into a, a maintenance fund and um. That is used when needed, um, I think the last large expenditure I was about, was last year for work that was done in twenty twenty-three. There was a contractor hired to remove trees and uh debris, not mainly get rid of trees and some of the structures and. They do that. Um, when they're small enough so that they're easy to get off and, and can be controlled and there's, they're chemically treated when the. The stumps are chemically treated so that the trees don't resprout. I think at, at least three of the structures are road structures. And that's been a benefit, I think, to the county again for controlling uh flooding. And it was done at a time when there's planned road construction there, so that it was a combined effort again, kind of like what was done with the upper Iowa project. For, with through HUD funds and um. That I think if the opportunity ever comes up again, there are some structures planned in, in Bear Creek that could be done in a manner also. So, um, our request is for five thousand dollars, like I mentioned. And just to put this in perspective a little bit, I worked for the Soil and Water Conservation District in Fillmore County for about thirty years. And in Minnesota and we had a structure there that had been installed in the mid-fifties. And um, when it came time to rehabilitate that structure, it was about a two hundred thousand dollar cost. So, the more you can do year to year with maintenance and so forth, is, is uh best to do it, you know. Pay saved is a penny or whatever, yeah, so, found a prevention. And also prevention is where the pound of cure, there we go, that's what I'm looking for, yeah.
Corey Brink, district conservationist with the U S D A, US Department of Agriculture, National Resources Conservation Service. Here in Nacora, uh, been here in Nacora. Two and a half years, uh, prior to that I was over in Cresco and Osage, uh, live here in Nacora, been with the agency over twenty years. And just wanted to hit a few major points, which is, you know, this is a, is a, is a mutual benefit for the county as well as. The district, um, the district, as you probably know, uh, was a governmental elected position. Mostly, mostly basically here to, to uh help folks in the county and. Um, a lot of the mutual benefits that have been realized, do like the HUD project that you mentioned, um, you can do a lot of. Road structures that hold back water, get these big surges so that our streams don't come up so fast really quickly. And then slowly let the water come off, that's, that's the main point of a lot of these structures that we're speaking of. As far as mutual benefit goes, also, if you look at the back page, there's roughly six and a half million in funds. Moving through our office, they're going to focus in this community. It's gonna help because you have contractors, you have uh farmers cooperatives. All that money goes somewhere when the project is getting done, it stays here in the chief counties.
So the, yeah, so the other. The other request is for twenty-five thousand dollars for technical assistance. Uh, that pays for a staff person, a technician who works on these programs, goes out and works with landowners. Does the required paperwork, tracking, data collection that's needed for making these programs work and so. Corey said there's a, a mutual benefit from, you know, for, for us to invest in that. And to get a return like of, of six million dollars, you know, back to the county for the text.
I have a question, do they ever create a new watershed, like, you know, you got Canoe Creek there, that's a nasty one for us. Then they ever need a new one to come up with.
Yeah, when they had that HUD project, Canoe Creek was a.
Was a.
Focus of it. Yeah, and they, they certainly do, and in fact, there's. It's not finally up, but there's talk of expanding into uh Almankey through Yellow River. So, so we have the headwaters of Yellow, heck, almost, probably almost a third of our county is covered by watershed projects, this is. We might be one of the, we might be the only county with that many watershed projects in the whole state. Which, which is only a benefit, right, it offers increased uh cost share rates for farmers in the watershed for.
Got a lot of bridges and just a. Bourbon air saddle all the time.
Yeah, so the, the ability to add watersheds is there, um, and usually that effort. Begins with, with the district, so if there's, you know, there's enough interest, folks talking about it, oh, someone willing to kind of, you know, get behind it. Always a possibility.
I always like to comment it, like seventy-five percent of the state of Iowa, they, their. Projects have to do with trying to get the water to leave drainage. Structures, trying to get the water out, out to get it out, whereas up here in northeast Iowa, we're trying to get our. Water to slow down and not leave so fast, so, so we are kind of unique in the way those. Set up for the, compared to the rest of the state.
Yeah.
We're one of the few counties that doesn't have any. Government uh organized drainage districts where, you know, most counties have at least some drainage districts where the. County helps facilitate cooperation amongst uh, uh neighbors to do drainage structures to get the water to leave faster. And we're one of the few counties that doesn't have any of those.
You can thank Karst for that.
Yeah, that's right, we have, it's the opposite.
Yeah, and, and, and the other thing that pushes a watershed project to get started is landowner interest, if you have people that are interested in doing projects. Having that um list of people willing, landowners, um, a list of. Uh, projects or practices that they're interested in doing, that's another thing that can spur getting a watershed project going. So, we, we can do applications through our office to get funding to, to get that going.
Can only do so much using road structures, you need a lot of.
Right, a lot of has to be.
In private areas, so.
So, um, so that's our request, five thousand dollars for Bear Creek maintenance uh program and um. Twenty-five thousand dollars for so, soil and water conservation district technician position. And that's, there's, that's the, the same that we requested in years past.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Yeah, I'd agree with Mark.
Yeah, driving through the, yeah, you can see the stream isn't healthy.
John? We had mentioned of, is there any more potential for these speakers to be louder?
Um, we had a second company come in and work on that. I don't know about them. So, I mean, we added the listening devices. They really have out hearing issues, so.
I still think the speakers probably aren't the adequate speaker needs to be there or asking puts it straight down or this person's this way.
Yeah.
Did over there, and the speakers just came straight down. That would make a difference, I think.
Well, it's kind of a two-fold thing because you have this, this is a room microphone and then it's actually programmed to to pick up certain parts of the room. And then he's actually got programmed in like a, I don't know, five or six thousandths of a second delay that gets processed into this. So you don't have any feedback. Oops. And we're lucky it even works at all.
On the sound, sound absorption panels to try to
Right.
help the acoustics. Perhaps proceed with that to see if that'll give us some relief.
I'm gonna get some pricing on the the sound.
Because I agree that to sit out there as a normal hearing person, they should be able to hear us in our meeting.
But I I can hear you fine, but I'm not that. I have
It depends on how we all talk, though.
Yes.
Sometimes we mumble down here and we're not projecting out there. And all of us around this table need to remember to speak loud enough that you guys can hear us. So keep reminding us.
Ben, I still think something that would direct the sound straight down into the carpeting. That's sound absorber. People not come up this way. I could sign the last landfall meeting we sat back there. I didn't have any problem.
The sound is really good on the, we're recording the meetings now and the sound quality there is exceptional. I've not had any complaints about that. So Fanta keeps working on that. She's even gonna try something this week where she's building chapters that kind of follow the agenda so that people can get to the pieces they want to hear about.
Otherwise, individual microphones need that option.
That City Hall hasn't figured out. There's gotta be a way.
Yeah, he's real. He got small. He's got too small an area to put a big acoustics in there. Yeah. I'll keep working on it.
Let's see.
All right.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, ten fifteen, Brian April, Assured Partners. You tell us when your rates are going down.
It's a, it's a good year. I will say that. Yeah.
Good morning.
So we had a
Maybe we should start with a review of the way the program kind of works, where I survive extremely high deductible, basically the minimum acquired deductible to make to meet Americans or the EPA rules. So it's a ten thousand eight hundred deductible per family and I don't remember.
Twelve, twelve nine for family and sixty four fifty.
There you go. There's number sixty for signal. That's what we buy from Wellmark. And then you asked earlier about that payment that we make. So then we have a side fund where we put the rest remainder of our premium and make that deductible lower for the employees. So they aren't dealing with that high deductible. That's all we're buying from Wellmark. The reason we switched to this. You go back fifteen years, we were self-funded, where we bought basically a catastrophic catastrophic policy, twenty five, thirty thousand deductible, reinsured. And then we did everything in-house. We were having trouble maintaining the amount of money we needed to keep that going. So we decided to go with a insured less exposure for the county. We looked at just buying a regular standard plan from Wellmark. But they figure their administrative costs based on the premium. And to get the lower deductible plan, you were paying such a high amount of administrative costs, it wasn't worth the extra to pay them to do it. But we wanted to keep that type of plan. So we went to this partially self-funded or mini-funding, it called different things. We, so we technically are still fully insured by Wellmark, but at this really high deductible. Then we keep the side fund to make the deductible lower for our employees. And so that's kind of an outline of the way the plan is designed, that some of the history of it. We were in dire straits and not about nine or ten, what one point where we had less than a month's worth of claims in the bank at one point. I mean, we were, the thing was almost bankrupt and we were actually outside of what the insurance regulations require. They require us to have at least so much in the bank. So that was why we switched way back then. And so as you know, last year, we didn't have an increase on the Wellmark premium side. We switched to a, instead of being in a group, we went on our own. Which we are having a healthy year for our employees. So they didn't give us a increase in our premiums last year. We were able to keep the Wellmark portion of the premium the same. We raised the total premium, twenty five dollars a month of single plans and filter that through the family plans. But we put all that extra money in our side fund because our side fund has been steadily decreasing. That has slowed the decrease in the side fund, but it hasn't stopped it. The our fund decreased year ago was in the hundred and eighty thousand amount for the year. This year, we're at about half of that so far. So we've kind of slowed our decrease, but we haven't stopped it. So we need to increase our our side fund deposit for sure. And then Brian's gonna tell you now what Wellmark's telling us.
Yeah, we we had another great year on claims. So not with Ben and Lynn, zero percent increase again, which is very rare in this environment. So that does give us an opportunity, like Ben said. We have this reserve fund that at one point in time was was quite high. We had a, we had a great problem to have. The county has switched carriers through the years, found some kind of creative solutions and done, in my opinion, the right thing in the past where we had a year where we saved money or even like a last year where it was zero. We we kind of play with that side fund and it's a little bit of a yo-yo. It was, I mean, it was north of a million.
We had a little bit more than a million at one point, but we, there was a year where we had a really bad Wellmark increase. In that year, we didn't even increase our our premiums for employees as much as what we needed to, figuring we would use the some of our extra to help supplement it. While this year, we're in the opposite. The last two years, we're in the opposite where the Wellmark premium hasn't really gone up. But our fund is getting low enough where we need to increase the side fund deposit.
And that's where we're, you know, feel kind of fortunate. It's it's not ideal for a county when you get, when you get an increase and you're and you have a decreasing partial fund because then you're dealing with two, two, yeah. So I think we're in a pretty good spot this year with zero and what what's been budgeted to really bolster the side. And then next year, you know, possibly back up, you know, see what our increase is. And we don't need to overfund, but we can just, we just have the flexibility with that reserve to.
I think that our, you know, the move to help and to help pay for family plans for employees, which took place three years ago or so. Help provide a benefit to employees to help attract and retain employees. But at the same time, I think it's actually strengthened our internal pool. We've gotten more younger people in our pool. So that's why we've been able to, in our own employee pool, including more families, has brought down the average age of a participant. So that's why we've had a couple of years of lower claims. When you look at the claims to number of people ratio, it's actually better. That's why we've been enjoying a a good report from Wellmark.
Yeah.
And Brian, you know, he's the expert on the big picture. And when he came last year and said that the previous to that, we were in a pool with other counties and cities. And he saw that they were accepting more members into that larger pool that were maybe not the healthiest employee groups and saw that that was going to negatively impact our rates going forward and recommended we look at splitting off on our own. And that was a really good choice for us at that point. Plus, the way Wellmark's rules work, you can't switch from one pool to another pool. You have to only can only go from pool to individual or individual to pool within Wellmark. So now that we're on our own, if we ever wanted to join another pool, we could.
And we we've got a direct in with the ISAC pool, which is running really well. Their plans are a little different than ours, so it would take some work. Like, I don't think we we have to do that now. But if the day comes that we want to look at a pool, ISAC, in my opinion, is where you want to be. Their their reserves are quite high. They manage it very aggressively. I've had several counties that they won't let in because they're protective of of the claims and the risks. So I feel like we're in a really good position. Right now, we're winning on our own. There could come a time where ISAC's got some some other positives, some added benefits that we could go down that path. They're they're two-tier rated, which we have single, employees, also employee child families. So that brings some logistical things that we've worked through in the past. It's not exactly perfect. But something we, something we have in our our hip pocket, too, that I think.
Something one of everyone makes, which would have to be at a at the change of the year, once a year.
Seven one. Yep.
Okay.
So so we're talking about these rates going into place for July first, which actually affects our payments in June. So it's the June payroll that these new rates would go into effect for seven one. Our plan year is July one through June thirtieth plan year.
What would our rates look like if we use, if we did join the ISAC pool, that we run those numbers?
Uh, we'd have to go through a full underwriting. They haven't, we haven't done that yet.
As long as we're not getting an increase from Wellmark on our own, we haven't seen a need to do that. But if whatever year comes along where Wellmark says, hey, we want whatever the percentage increase is, that's when we then ask Brian to go and do all the paperwork to see what ISAC could offer us.
You said that as a two-tier, so it's single or family.
Yeah, that's how they do their base rates. We can kind of manipulate it with that partial funding number to to still create for. But it it's not as clean. And just looks a little odd when when we look at the math, kind of behind the numbers, you've got some tiers, like an employee child that actually have negative funding. Well, how, you know, how does that, how does that work? You know, it's just a, certainly not as clean as OR. And I know they have some good things projected. I don't know if four-tier would be one of them. But right now, they don't have it as high of deductibles as we have, and that's really worked well for us with the with the buying down and the partial. So it'd be a fair amount of change to do it. So I think that's kind of why we've
We got we had a good year.
We got out of that with Iowa Community Trust. This has worked well. But but good to know that we have that.
As an option.
Yeah, it's kind of an art. Thank you. But I don't know, Ben, if you want to talk on what
So specifically, what we're recommending is an eighty dollar increase for single plans. And then there's tier multipliers to then automatically calculate that for the three other tiers.
For the side fund.
Further than that, we put it all under the side fund. So we're keeping our Wellmark portion of premium the same, putting that extra amount into the side fund. You know, if we were, you know, we had money flowing out our ears or something, we could do a hundred. I think that would maybe even be healthier. But I think this would is something we can do and not have to, you know, raise our levy rates or something significant, but still help stem the, maybe even grow the side fund some.
Will this give us the ability to grow that side fund up above the level that we look like we're going to now?
Not in one year. That will not. The the goal at this point is to get it to quit decreasing and build a little bit. And then each year, we'll be able to build that back some. I think ideally, we would shoot, once we get to a million, we're overfunding it, really. But under that four or five hundred thousand, then we're getting, it's getting to be more of a risk. I mean, you're running the risk that if you have a really cataclysmic year where you have everybody that you don't have enough money. So we would
Three seventy two.
Yeah, I think it's it's too low right now. And so if we can put this in place now, build back a little next year. If that is, works the way we're hoping, then that continued, that rate should help build it into the future. But it won't be all in one year. There's no way. I mean, you'd have to go major increase to try to
Go this rate for one year and see where we're at.
Yeah, I think in retrospect, we should have done more than twenty five last year. But I was hoping that twenty five would save, it would stem the, you know, stem the bleeding. I'm trying to say it that way, but it it didn't. I mean, Brian and I talked about it last year and and we were dealing with last year that this health insurance paid from the supplemental fund. So it's not restricted by House File seven eighteen. But we were looking at twenty three percent increases in our property or in our property insurance, which was gonna hit the supplemental fund hard. And we moved the nine one one power funding to the supplemental fund last year. So we were hitting that fund really hard last year anyway. So, you know, twenty five seemed doable, but maybe should have been a little more. But now we're gonna have to do a little bit bigger bite this year, but.
So who's paying the eighty dollars?
The eighty dollars is what you pay.
We're budgeting.
Where you would budget because you, not the employee. But then there's increases in those tier plans, depending on which plan they decide, their portion will go up some.
Do the first eighty, one twelve, one twenty two and one seventy four, so increase on the other three.
Yeah. So the, what your current policy is, is that you pay the full premium except for a dollar for single plans. And then you pay the rest of the premium for the employee children plan, except for a dollar. Whatever that calculates to be, that's the same amount you would have paid towards employee spouse or family. So that's how that figures through. There's, I have a kind of complicated spreadsheet that actually calculates these numbers. I present these as just ones that really affect you enough employees. But there's a lot of formulas and tier multipliers and things in there, but. So.
I think just from an area standpoint, like the change that was made, our our benefits definitely are competitive sometimes. Yeah.
I mean, we, there are counties that buy, pay all of the family plan, but then they have, you know, they might have a thousand dollar deductible rather than the the hundred to two hun, well, it's, we have a max out of pocket of five hundred for singles and thousand for families. So that's really the key number, the deductible is that's just where you play with the numbers at lower. Now, you look at the max out of pocket and and those are what really affects the employees. And so and the amount we pay is still less than most counties of our size. It's because of the fact that we don't fund the whole family plan. We fund about third of the cost of, and as a aggregate, the all or has all of the family plans, we're funding about a third of the cost. And as a aggregate, the all or has all of the family plans, we're funding about a third of the cost. A family plan or some counties fund all of it. So we're actually. Not funding as much as many counties, but we're still providing a plan that's competitive for to get employees. Not every employee needs the family plan, so giving that benefit to everybody is kind of. Not always beneficials.
Do we have any idea yet where our ICAP increase will or will not go this year?
I haven't heard anything, which probably means it isn't as bad. Last year, when they were looking at a big increase, they were warning us, because they ICAP. Uh, primarily ensures counties and some cities. Um, and other government agencies, and they know. Because their board of directors is made up of county elected officials, they know that we're doing budgeting now. So last year at this time, we were getting a lot of communication from them. Plan for increases, because they knew it was going to be bad. Not hearing anything, I think. Probably means it's not going to be nearly as bad this year.
That deductible.
Clear, that's out of pocket, but.
Deductible is here, we have hundred, two hundred. And the max out of pocket. Do they have to look in a set amount of chunk, like five hundred or?
We're we're doing, we're we construct our side fund ourselves, so we could. You could get rid of deductibles and just have max out of pocket. We're the leave the five hundred thousand, not do the. Co-insurance on the deductibles. And we're constructing that ourselves through. Our local Midwest Group Benefits is doing it the way we do it. So if for some reason you wanted to. Get rid of deductibles, just keep the max out of pocket, we could do that.
Or this could be. This could really be any number.
Two hundred.
Whatever we wanted to do, we could, we could do that. I think that the. The key is that. In years where you're fighting the. House File seven eighteen and be having to weigh your salary against what you can afford. Providing an insurance benefit which isn't out of the general fund and isn't restricted. Is something you don't, you want to keep that as good as you can, because that isn't going to cost you against your limited funding source. I don't know if there could be, Midwest Group Benefits hasn't increased their. Administrative rate for several years, but I don't know if we went to them and said. We're getting rid of deductibles. We just, we just want max out of pockets, so they have a whole. Lot fewer claims to actually. Actually process, so they aren't doing that eighty-twenty. If we could negotiate for a better rate or something, or if they ask for an increase and we say, well, maybe we can make. The workload less. I mean, that might be something to consider. Because that would it would be a significantly. Less burdensome administration if you didn't have that eighty-twenty split of co-insurance. Between the deductible and the max out of pocket. That's. The vast majority of the work involved in administering our side fund is figuring all those all the time.
Lower your.
Yeah, and then that may be something that Brian could talk with them about if there was some way. Save a little bit on our administrative fee and get rid of all that work that's associated with it that.
In some regards, that's easier for an employee to understand too, that the eighty-twenty gets like.
Because you get a hundred and then you start only paying twenty percent, but then it takes you another. Whatever nineteen hundred dollars to get to the five hundred until you hit your max out of pocket, then they start paying everything as. It can be confusing.
Do you really lower your out of pocket rate, four hundred, eight hundred?
And then just made deductible that would save us a lot of administration, maybe. Part of the administration fee and be easier to understand. But something we should, we could talk with them about.
What's our union?
Um, well, it is. We are, it has no union implications right now, because with the changes in collective bargaining law a few years ago. Except for law enforcement personnel, they can't even. Health insurance is not even optionally negotiable. So the other, the two unions, jailers and the roads can't. Ask to talk about. Negotiate. Health insurance benefits. They did leave that in the law for law enforcement, but our law enforcement has decertified their union, so they aren't even. Yeah, so I think the clause in the collective bargaining agreement says something like, or in the. Separate policy just says that they follow the same plan as the rest of the county. Something to that effect. I'm sure it's much more. Andy would say there's much more legally. That's worded than that, but. That's actually required under ACA, uh, Civil Care Act. We didn't use to cover that way back when we were. Self-insured, we didn't, we just, if you had a physical, just went towards your deductible like any other charge. It was something that some employees asked for. We added it in, that was when we had a health insurance committee, that was something that was brought up. So we added that in. We saw virtually no change. The number of people getting annual wellness physical. So. You could get, you can leave the horse to water, you can make them drink, I mean, we.
It's there, that's what you need.
And I, you know, I don't know that. Like, my wife works at the school and they get a. They have, they don't, can't require it. I don't know if that's part of their negotiation or. The law, they don't require it, but they give you a benefit. They give you a a wellness check and a stipend payment. If you do go and do your annual blood draws and so on, and they coordinate it, then they have. One of the providers come and do like a little clinic before, after school where they do blood draws and things, so.
They, it it is kind of a unique. Deal, we buy a critical illness plan. That has this hundred dollar benefit, so part of the wellness benefits, so part of the critical illness plan is. If you get a blood draw, you can get a hundred dollars and the plan costs around a hundred dollars. So it's like, well, this is. This is a no-brainer. And then we've had a handful through the years, if you have heart attack, cancer, stroke, they get. Anywhere from twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollar check from the critical illness. So we kind of felt like. You know, we didn't, we didn't have a wellness program in place. We didn't really have a.
Talking about the school.
Yeah, the school. Where this was kind of a. Okay, we're, you know, we're we're getting this critical illness, which we wouldn't have sold standalone, there's just not. Enough of that to probably warrant it budget-wise, but when we got the hundred dollar wellness benefit. And now you're getting eighty percent participation in the blood draw, because they want. The hundred bucks and everybody kind of wants to know.
And and that's exactly the type of benefit. I mean, that basically that's. About a hundred dollar cost per employee to the the county implemented that. But those employees then that choose to participate get the hundred dollars back. And so that's the kind of benefit you could offer. As another. Benefit that would be paid for from the supplemental fund, not in our restricted general fund that you could help. That maybe could have helped. Employees both, you know, make the employees, uh. Getting them a little more compensation, a hundred bucks is pretty minimal, but at the same time helping them encouraging them to be. Healthier and get those things checked.
Previously, and. Every other year you had to have a blood draw, and they came right to the institution and did the blood draw there. Cause that would go as a walk-in. I'd go for forty-five dollars rather than three hundred if you. It would probably save. Yeah, didn't organize. A lot rather than going down, going to the full. I'm not saying they don't serve revenue, but at the same time. If you can save several hundred dollars per employee.
And, you know, and through the years, you you do get the. Success story of, I had no idea, you know, I hadn't gone to the doctor in five years. I was borderline diabetic, made some few, made a few changes and now I'm not, you know, you'll cover. Uncover a few of those that have claim, so we could claim implications.
That's something, yeah, I think that's something. Yeah, so that's something, Brian, that's what we pay Brian a retainer to be our. Broker and agent to help. Recommend things. So if you wanted to have him look into something like that, whether it's through a the. A program like the school has with a critical health policy or just something we want to implement separate, it might be something worth looking into. I don't think that actually affects our rates, what we're discussing right here, but it's something that we should maybe consider.
A wellness program is probably a smart thing to implement.
This one has worked out well. I mean, we we've we've vetted with a lot of our groups, you know, there's, you can spend about as much as you want. Because somebody's going to sell it to you. And and some of them are really, really good, but. For bang for your buck. This one has worked out well. And then in those bad cases of. So-and-so got cancer or this, then while they got, they got a year or two of their out-of-pocket. Maximum covered. With that check back, so like in a time of. Tough stuff, it's kind of worked out too bold.
Or regularly, which. I can, we can numerous people that get no clue until I said it.
So I guess you had some, you have some homework assigned. Two things are the wellness, critical illness, and then half talking with Midwest Group Benefits. See what would happen if we got rid of the deductible and just went with a maximum out of pocket. Or a deductible that was equal to the maximum out of pocket, rather than doing co-insurance. In between.
How would that work in insurance if we?
Uh, we would. Likely want to run it through the. Through the fund, through the supplemental fund and but like you'd said. Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we have two, two major locations with. Secondary roads and preport and here catches the majority of employees.
It's great, um, to do a walk-in, almost you have big cash for it and then.
Doesn't. Yeah, so that's, so it's disincentive to, yeah, I did it last year. I'm not going to spend forty-five bucks.
Cause most anyone that sound like a prescription medication, you have to have it every year anyway. Save a lot of money. By just us doing every year offering the walk-in.
The other thing, you know, on our end or just from a. Uh, marketing education standpoint. Is telling our our people, you know, you got this done, here's your numbers. You're going to go to your doctor and they're going to be used to say, well, I'm just going to order a panel for you. Well, no, I've I've got it done. That's where we're going to save. Two, three, hundred, four hundred bucks. Yeah, but sure, you might as well pay for it, so. It is.
Anyway, it's already worked out.
Yes, um, I do have this. But I'll, I'll work on that and then set up with you or Lynn on. On another visit. It's only two blocks away, so it's not too bad.
I'll have the action and approve the rates at another meeting. So that I can make sure that matches everything I've calculated. Carrot sticks.
Morning, Andy.
Thanks for waiting so patiently.
It's always informative. What do you have for me? I don't have much.
I haven't done anything. Andy just sent me a list of. Uh, appraisers, so we'll try to get that emailed out. Um, if any of you know of any local ones, if they don't get it and want it, we can go ahead and email it to them, but. The list was quite lengthy, so I don't know if to figure out a good way.
There are six hundred and eighty-five certified appraisers in the state of Iowa. But that list also included residential appraisers, uh, you know. So it it needs some fine tuning, but. Anyway, there is a list.
We're talking about appraisers for the DHS building on South Highway fifty-two.
Are there some that are just commercial? From Jim, might be.
I haven't received the list.
Three, there's three on that, that, uh, two local. And one commercial that he recommended off of the list that he had.
Yeah, and I. Maybe we use the same one. I've had a couple of tax appeals with Jim, where we've had appraisers hire and. I was thinking we'd use two different appraisers, but maybe it was the same one, because I'm guessing that is the, uh.
Yeah, that was the one he recommended out of Des Moines, and that makes sense under the circumstances of those dark store issues that come up.
Yeah, I mean, the. And I'm not, he, this appraiser may be able to. To do this for us, but the appraisal. What's the revenue generating? So it was more retail or hotel or something that was a cost. Analysis rather than. Uh, a comparable sale type thing, but that's not to say they can't do it. So if you can give me those, so we'll include all the rest.
I see there was appraiser listed in the paper by all the qualifications.
Is the tax appeal something you can talk about in this meeting for the public?
Um, it's public credit that.
So they know what we're talking about.
Um, there was an appeal. And several over the years, but the appeal is trying to reduce the property tax assessment on commercial buildings. Um, goes to the, um. Uh, Appeal Board for the State and, um.
First, it goes to the local, right?
Yes, to the Appeal, the Appeal Board for the State. And oftentimes we get an appraiser involved and say, no, our our numbers are correct. And that's where that's coming from.
It's one of the main businesses right now doing that is Walmart, local.
They have done it, um, we've seen it from, um, a few of the local hotels, um. You know, we we have a number of them that get filed.
It's multiple millions of dollars difference, not. Hundred thousands.
Larger corporations that are. Trying to save themselves money. I don't want anything else for you.
Thank you.
And next up, miscellaneous item, how the most file seven eighteen. I personally think of. Letter would be a great idea.
It's a thought and feel to have all the right reasons, it's the possible thing. It's something we can do, otherwise you just sit back and take it. After work, so. I'm in favor of placing that the letter. That multiple people in the county can sign.
When you say multiple people in the county, in addition to the people around this table, who do you mean?
Um, I think.
Yeah, Dan recommended the elected official.
We're not the only ones that are stuck with this budget issue. And so.
And if we don't let them know that we're. No, very unhappy about it.
They made changes to the licensing fees or whatever, but that's just the. Drop in the bucket. I mean, that's not even a.
Insult.
It is, really.
I'd be happy to work on this letter.
I think Dan, with good Dan Marks, does he draft someone himself?
No, he said he didn't want to be in charge of drafting.
Yeah, that should be included.
I'd be happy to work with somebody on drafting a letter. I'd, I'd be happy to work with somebody on drafting a letter. I'd be happy to work with Dan on that and then submit it to everybody for approval, I mean, we're not gonna send it till everybody's on board with it.
If Dan's willing to contribute, most for surely, I think that would be a great start anyway.
And or Ben.
And or Ben, and, uh.
I think Ben, Ben has the understanding of real financial impact.
So I think, but do you want to work with the two of them? Need emotion on that or?
I'll just put it as consensus, since there's nothing.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, would you encourage just community members to write and contact legislators as well? I mean, anything that would be helpful?
That's a good question, you know, if you wanna take it, if you wanna see your pat, your property tax. Uh, be realistic in some of the, the government expenditures at the state level changed. That is where the real problem is. Problem, one of the problem I perceive with community members is if they're not totally educated. About House File seven eighteen, one hundred percent, and they maybe just be take one part of it. And be talking about that where they don't know what the whole deal.
Iowa Capital Dispatch is a great. I, I'm very agree with you.
I think it'd be great to, uh, wait and see what our letter or the bigger letter from the county looks like and then the, I think the citizens should definitely. Take off on that. So it's more of a focused.
Interesting to hear on Thursday what ISAC has to say, if it's a legislative agenda.
Okay, that sounds good. Can I, can I use the whiteboard and talk about Senate, Senate File seven eighteen? I, this was accurate information when I did talk about Senate or, uh, House File seven eighteen. Uh, but there was a change last year, Senate File two, four, four, two, so I wanna talk about that. Because it actually is good news this time, so they did change a little bit. So the Senate File two, four, four, two had three main.
You can go ahead, you guys follow that, I'll rewrite that.
Had three main, uh, parts to it, the two that I was familiar with. Until I was actually doing some calculations for our budget last week, was that they changed the timeline for cities, schools and counties. To submit their levies so that we can send that required letter. And they changed what the examples are on that letter, which is good because they used poor examples like. But the third thing they changed, which I failed to report when I did this, uh, was that the original House File. Seven eighteen, I talked about that reduction levy rate, said if your valuation was less than three percent. You use the same levy rate. If it was, uh, three percent to six percent, you had to, uh, divide. By one hundred and two percent, so it was a two percent reduction in what you. And I'll, I'll kind of show that here in a minute, and then six percent plus was. Uh, divide by one hundred and three percent. So the higher your, the better your increase in value, the more they restricted your levy rate. Uh, Senate File two, four, four, two, which goes into effect on the. FY twenty six budget, which is what you're working on now. Change this to less than two point seven five percent, same. Two point seven five to four is, uh, uh, divide by. One hundred and one percent, four to six is divide by. One hundred and two percent, the six plus was divide by one hundred and three percent. Which this is, I like the more even because if you were at, under this system, if you were at like a two point nine five percent. Increased in your value, you got to utilize that whole amount, whereas if you were at three point one percent. All of a sudden, you're down to one point one percent, basically, you lost it, I mean, it was. A big disadvantage to hit that three percent, here they've tried to smooth it out, so. So how this works is you take, so we're actually here. Whereas when I originally did that calculation with the eighty two thousand, I was using this one. So that's the good news is that we lose less than what we, so they take your, uh, last year's. Last year's value. This is FY twenty five for actually the current year value times the FY twenty five levy. Is, um, it equals your FY twenty five tax collections. So what this says is if you take your FY twenty six value. Times the old levy rate. It's gonna give you, uh, a potential collections. But then you take the, um. Make sure I give you the right number here. Take the potential collection, um, and you divide it by, so then you take this number. And divide it by one hundred and one percent to give you your maximum collection, this for the new year. That's where this one hundred and one percent, you take that maximum collection. And you backwards filter it through the value will give you your maximum levy rate. What that means for us is that when we, when I put these numbers all in here, um, last year we were at. Uh, FY twenty five, so the current year, last year when you were doing the budget, you were at four dollars and forty eight cents. For the general fund. I take the four forty eight times the new value, it gives me six, six million five hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred fifty two. We divide that by one hundred one percent, says that we have, can only collect six million. Five hundred and thirteen, six hundred and eleven dollars, which is a levy rate of. Out four and a half cent less, so it's about four. Or three, five, something like four and a half cents, yeah. So our levy rate is gonna go down about four and a half cents, that's gonna give us this much, uh, um. Property tax collections, which is one hundred and forty seven dollars and a. One hundred forty seven thousand, one hundred and fourteen dollars more than what we collected last year. And this is the official amount, this is, I actually did that calculation, that's our new money in the general fund.
It's a plus over eighty two.
That's right, yeah, yes. You know, the rural fund follows the same ru, same set of rules and formula. It has a separate growth rate, so it can theoretically be that your rural fund falls into a different category. Than your general fund, but I won't go through all the details of that, but it, for us, that calculates out. It actually falls in the same one percent and it gives us forty one thousand. Five hundred and twenty seven dollars of new money in the rural fund. The supplemental fund is not restricted under either of these. House File seventeen or Senate File two, four, four, two, but for our first run, my intent, usually what we do is for a first run. Is my intent would lead you to use just the same rate as last year. Um, if we see that that's not gonna work, then we'll talk about if we have to raise it or if we have too much money, if we can lower it. It's not restricted.
Yeah.
Yeah. The same levy rate will generate. Uh, one hundred and fifty three thousand. Five hundred and six dollars of new money. So those are basically our three, when we do the first runs. Property tax money, we're gonna have the new, uh, hundred forty seven thousand, hundred and fourteen. In the general, that'll be more than last year, we'll have forty one thousand, five hundred and twenty seven, and the rural is more, more than last year. And we'll have hundred and fifty three thousand, five hundred and six in the supplemental of new money. Those three funds, now another advantage for the supplemental fund. Is that we allocated remaining, uh, ARPA money. Uh, to the nine one one towers, so since Fasstina came off. We paid for all of our other programs, there was only two outstanding programs, otherwise, one is the flood reduction structures. The conservationist putting in as part of the trail project through the dry run area. And you pledged to pay the twenty percent match, so that one is con, under contract. Paul reported that when he was here, that that got under contract at the end of December, so it's allocated, that's the, that's the ARPA money. And then we have, still have a few hundred dollars in there to pay Paul for his administrative costs. Otherwise, anything left goes to the towers, and so that leaves. Which is good, we got rid of the Fasstina project, cause we were make, gonna be negative, we had to spend all of that. Fasstina money that we had said we would if they needed it, but one eighty seven, nine sixty six. So rather than us funding that nine hundred thousand dollar payment out of the supplemental fund. For the nine one one towers, we'll be able to fund seven hundred and twenty two, twenty three. Whatever it is, twenty, that's eighty eight, so seven hundred and twenty two thousand. Uh, thirty four dollars is what you'll actually have to take out of your property tax collections to pay the nine one one tower bill. So that's gonna leave this much more, so in the supplemental fund. Actually, you had to raise it significantly because of that nine one one tower payment, you may be able to, even with, you know, this. Increase of eighty dollars per month in health insurance, I mean, that's not gonna eat all that up. And what we can put in the supplemental fund is very restricted, what we can actually put in there, I. Once we do the first run, I'll give you a better figure, but I'm guessing we may be able to lower that levy rate a little bit. Just because we don't want to keep it higher than, way higher than necessary. Because we bumped it up so much last year, if you can bring it down a little bit this year, I think we'll calculate how much we need, how, how much carryover. We'll see if there is something there to actually lower that.
If the state does decide to limit that going in the future, will it be based off of where we're at?
Probably, that's the way they've always done that, there may be some advantage to just leaving it if we get to hear that.
I think it'd be best to leave it there in case they start.
That is the case, that is a good idea. Yeah, I mean, that's what we did.
With the rural fund two years ago, we left it, even though I, it had been a normal year, I had advised you could lower it ten cents. Cause we don't need that much money in there, but with the state doing it now this year, that's good that we left it there. Cause we only have forty one thousand dollars of new money in the rural fund, just the maximum transfer to roads is gonna use up more than that. So anything else we pay for on the rural fund is coming out of our, our carryover. Now, the big one there is that you had put three hundred thousand in the, uh, rural, the road. Uh, side maintenance last year and based, Michael basically reported that. We could get by the two hundred this year, so that extra hundred thousand can help make up for other increases in the rural fund. The other big one, and this is one I'm kind of need answered, is that, uh, in the rural waste. Collection budget, there's almost two hundred thousand, a hundred and seventy five thousand, I think, to buy a third truck. If you want that left in there, that will, will affect how I do that, cause that's a big trick amount in a fund. That doesn't have a lot of new money that I need to know if you want that in there or not.
But still is debatable. So if we, we have two trucks that are even a little relatively new, probably need to look at how we're gonna replace.
Yeah, one, the other option or other thing to consider is the rural waste collection is through the rural fund. Whereas the, the first two trucks were bought through recycling, which is in the general fund. And if you can realize more, you got the two hundred fifty to pay off the spectrum building, but if you get extra money. When you sell the DHS building and wanna use that money to buy the truck. We could do that, but then we need to pay for it out of the general fund through the recycling budget, it's not out of the rural base. Cause we can't put the sale of the building in the rural fund.
Cause I, I think the money that's already in the budget there. We're double, it's kind of, the, the problem with that rural waste, it's not. Roushi County Solid Waste Agency and it's not recycling, yet if we're gonna haul it, it's a conflict of, so. Somebody needs to supplement recycling. We're gonna need to pick up with that, I mean, that's the way I would look at it, yeah, just wipe it out of there. So it's gonna take, well, I think examining, once we get a new manager hired and we decide how we're gonna do drivers, part time, full time, whatever. And employees, then we should look at how that's gonna be subsidized through rural waste if we're gonna pick it up. If we don't go with the bids we took for contract calling.
And did we get any bids, Steve, did you get any bids? I didn't get any bids.
I don't think we got any bids, I haven't seen anything, Mark, you haven't seen anything?
Not yet.
And, uh, I think no one was.
Yeah, well, it was for, only for six months and as people thought potentially. If somebody has to hire more drivers and or equipment for only six months, is it worth the time? If we want a long-term look at it, I'm sure we would get bids for it, but.
So for the first run, you want to leave the third truck in the budget? You want it paid out of the rural fund, out of rural waste, or do you want me to move it? Into the general fund somewhere, recycling or just as a capital improvement and hope you can buy it using proceeds from the sale of the DHS building?
We got free port or local shop is, if you're in the selling building, you should put it back in the.
Leave the truck in and put it in the, in the rural waste collection.
For now, yeah. I mean, I would say that.
I'm definitely not in favor of using that, no, or money on a building sale to go.
Okay, and it might work out okay, just because I have seen it's still an increase in growth in the. Once on sales tax collection, which goes into the rural fund, that might be enough between that. Forty one thousand and a hundred thousand that we'll take out of the road clearing, that we might be able to make it work. I'll, I'll play with those numbers and tell you how I reported on the first run, depending on what our fund balance looks like when I.
Insurance probably is like for me to be about a hundred, hundred and some thousand.
Insurance is not in the rural fund, but that's the. Insurance is not in the rural fund, but that's the supplemental.
That would be on supplemental.
Yeah.
Excuse me, on that.
Yeah, so that was my first question. Next question, uh for first run considerations, that maybe we aren't ready yet, 'cause we don't know raises to do a first run. But position hiring, some position places that we have positions that are open, I need to know which ones to leave in and which ones not.
Is there a freeze or not?
I know that, I don't know what your committee's just talked about it for recycling, but at least my understanding is that Evan doesn't intend to go back to conservation. So do we wanna pull at least that position out of that budget?
Yeah.
And do we wanna put it into recycling then?
Yeah.
We've still got. The agreement was that even his position would come over to.
Until the funding that came out, the, the landfill agents.
And we'll have to move that a portion of last year's, or this past year's allotment into
Into recycling.
Into recycling. Wow, whatever. Yeah, quite half now, it's over, but yeah.
Well, we actually moved it a little over, yeah, beginning of December.
That'll have to get done.
It's solid waste, vote on that.
I think solid waste.
No, it's none of our, they've, they've got the money already.
Solid waste, are they going to be giving the grant to fund a position at, in, at recycling? Let me finish my sentence. Are they, have they voted, have you guys voted in solid ways to allocate six grand thousand dollar grant to recycling for recycling education?
No, it hasn't come up yet.
Okay.
But doesn't get, doesn't get done till Jan, or Thursday, July one. So it's.
So you'll probably vote on it.
We'll vote on it, discuss it when it, when it comes time to do it.
So what, conservation will be back there.
They'll, that's, none of, none of the landfills, that's, that's just here.
Yeah, it may take the landfill asking them to reimburse the remainder for this year to get it to, I don't know, I mean, or.
That was the intention.
But I would take the sixty eight out of the conservation.
Put it in over there.
Okay.
The grant.
Half the grant.
For, for next year, the whole.
For your next year.
Current, the current is.
The current year we'll do during a budget amendment, so we'll have to do that in the next couple of months.
So she's not gonna get the grant money. It's not our money.
Right, that's the grant money. So that was, that's just when I, that one actually won't affect your total levy, it'll be, I'm gonna move it from one department to the other. Okay. The treasurer's office. I mean, he, he gave you, even hiring someone, they're still at a lower employee to population ratio than any other county in our, in our area or our population range.
I think the budget he presented to us is within reason, and I think we should put that into the first run.
I wonder if there's other offices that could share a halftime position, though.
Yeah, recorder's office.
He said this electronics and online is available to everyone, and more peo- more and more people are using it, so.
He also said, though, it didn't reduce the amount of work they do in the office, it still has to be filed.
And you got the recorder's office, they have one more to full time.
They did halftime.
They ain't got nothing to do anyway, halftime, so. To me, that was, you got, you got three of them in there that are. Yeah.
What are you basing that statement on, that they?
I actually asked Jane, I asked Jane if she thought that she could share Tim, and she didn't think that they would have enough time to be able to share that person.
'Cause she had the two and a half people in the office.
So yeah, well, yeah, well, that's two and three quarters.
'Cause she said last year.
The person that was, is, is part time, is still technically part time, but is at thirty hours a week.
With, with health insurance.
Yes.
So the health insurance cost is the twelve thousand dollar plus kicker, six dollars, six dollars an hour wage.
Yeah.
Plus.
Have you talked to the recorder's office, and they have told you they have nothing to do?
I just go by what I hear.
From what, you hear from who?
I'm just saying, I go by with what I hear.
From who?
Steve, actually, a thirty five hours of new insurance will cost seven dollars. Seven dollars and two cents. For a forty dollar worker, it costs six fifty.
Or eighteen twenty, it costs seven dollars.
So that's why I, I would say if people could share a full-time position, we're gonna save a good amount of money in that. I'm not saying either of those offices, but I think if everyone put their heads together and figure out, how could
I think there's a.
Those offices, or your office, or somebody's offices could look at that and say, how can we reallocate position? Well, every, other industries do it, and so I think we.
When, when uh they first started for the county, she was half time in the treasurer's office and half time in the VA office as the clerk. So she worked split shifts between the two. Um when the VA wanted a full-time person, and they hired her full time, then the treasurer's office couldn't find a part-time person, so they hired another full-time person, which put them at seven. And when Brenda was promoted to treasurer, she did replace herself, so she went, they went back down to six. And that's fluctuated a little there.
With some of the CDL, what we do not do with CDL anymore, I think that can.
I think that's why.
They trouble the workload.
Brenda didn't ever replace them.
I think it would be better serving our county and our employees if we brought any people we're talking about. Instead of making assumptions right now around the table, why don't we have a conversation with these department heads and have these questions answered around the table with them here?
I, I think having a, a work session for
Yeah.
department heads and say, how could we potentially cut at least one this year, maybe one next year, through attrition of positions?
Let's take it out, and let's put the first run in, and then have a work session. Let's see how the impact is, because efficiencies certainly can be gained. We're looking for efficiencies in all these other departments, 'cause the efficiencies that we're asking inside the courthouse.
But I think it'd be acceptable.
That's so.
Let's take them out now and see if it's viable, if it's viable to put them back, we can put them back in second run.
I think we leave them in and see if it's viable in the first run.
Well, we got money we could use in the infrastructure money, if there's extra money around. We gotta start putting more money towards the infrastructure in each road, because we're fifty million dollars behind.
It's upside down.
Down. And that's the only, it's one of the only departments, so variable. I mean, you just, you got, equipment keeps going up, you get, you're limited of what you can put in there. I mean, we've got to put some money into the infrastructure deal, so road department can use it for these bridges, roads.
We're putting our.
I mean.
So we're putting our backs in, though.
I know, in the road department, but I'm saying the infrastructure money in the general fund, we can go, we can put money into that infrastructure fund to give to the road, to use for infrastructure.
I'm still.
I mean, we have to start doing something to help that part of it out, because we're, we are so far behind and upside down that we're never gonna, yeah.
If we are gonna not hire another employee, this would be the time to look at it, before you hire someone and then you say.
Yeah.
Yeah.
He has started advertising, knowing that if you don't leave it in there, he probably won't hire. He says, needs him now, I mean, he's.
Can we just stop for a second? Good leadership empowers their employees and brings them to the table and has the conversations with employees. We don't just assume what works for them or what doesn't work for them. Bring them to the table, so we can have an adult conversation with our department heads.
Take offense to that, Shirley, we're having adult conversations.
They're like.
Our issue, excuse me.
Excuse me, finish my statement, they are not at this table, we're making assumptions.
I am.
And our issue is.
Excuse me, Steve. What I'm trying to say is if we add that employee right now, and next year the cuts come back, then you're the one that's gonna walk up to the employee and say, sorry, you're gone.
I think we have to have the conversation with those department heads at the table, we're making assumptions right now. That's not how you.
I'm basing it off money that we either have.
Then we organize to have people have a work session and say, what are our positions? I, 'cause Tim has a valid point when he said halftime doesn't work, because they're not gonna stick around. But if it's a half, it's a full time, it's split half and half, they're gonna have the full benefits and the full things, you know? 'Cause they look at other departments, the counties, and they do have these halftime positions, but I'll guarantee they're probably split between two different offices. And so they can get the full benefits, and we can decrease the amount we're spending. But if we could just have everyone come around and say, is there a potential for us to be able to split a position here going forward, because we're gonna have to make some changes?
I think a work session would, is a good idea.
So I don't know, would that would work to do that? It would be work to have the session without us here, so they can do the initial talks, and then we come in and listen to what they come up with.
Your comment on five hours a week times X number of employees is another part-time person besides if you put everybody on the same work schedule in a county.
That was pretty glaring when the, when assessors showed what people are making, and we've got people working forty hours a week that are making less, far less than the people who are making thirty five.
Far less.
Let alone the differential hours. So I just think if everyone can come together and talk, that would be great. Maybe nothing could happen that way, but if we could figure out how we can at least not hire one person back this year, maybe next year through attrition, we see how it's working, maybe we can do another position. But that's a lot of revenue that we're saving.
How about, do you want me to leave the, do you want to just leave that questionable too, like the extra maintenance person? Another one you wanna leave until after this meeting? I mean, I can't run a first run till I know what to put in the first run, so that's why I'm asking. But if, if we don't know what raises to put in the first run, I'm not gonna be able to run a first run next year, next week anyway. So maybe we just, you have another union negotiation session tomorrow, maybe I try to organize this department head meeting. There, or probably next Monday after your regular meeting, just to facilitate it and decide about some first run decisions after that.
That would be great.
Be fun.
And I, I think if we have, if you have that meeting, I think we'll just keep our comment out of it, let them work, work through it and see what they can come up with. That'd be my advice anyway. Okay. Or if Dan wanted to be there just to express the part of the.
Yeah, that will matter, I mean, if you wanna have a depart- department heads meeting where all, if it's three or more of you are present, then it's an open meeting. Whereas if you wanna have a department heads meeting where one or two of you go to represent the board and the other department heads, then it doesn't have to be a open meeting.
That would be better.
Sit in with me, Mark?
Sure.
Let, back up just a second, why wouldn't you want it to be an open meeting?
I think.
It's, it's of interest to our.
Well, I think so, but I think the whatever talk you, that you're gonna get out of the department heads will be
Better.
Will be more open, and it's not an open meeting.
Likewise, if we're not all five of us sitting there watching.
I think if they, I mean, they, they realize you have, the department heads realize you have the control of the budget, and so you know, trying to justify their positions, they're gonna be, it's gonna be presented differently, I think, if you have a open meeting with all five of you there, then if you let them be more, feel like their last, yes, yes. That's just my impression. I mean, obviously, what you decide at the meeting, by the time you're gonna come back and report it to the full board during an open meeting anyway, it's just the way that discussion happens.
And I think we'll get their true feelings if they are not at an open meeting.
Yeah.
Maybe you can have a better conversation.
I think so, and I'm just kind of retracting, I'm willing to do it, but since you and Shirley are working in the evening, with the two of you wanna sit on that meeting, I could have brought a picture of.
You're in the union?
No.
So Dan and Shirley.
You're doing a great job, so I think Dan and Shirley would, but, I mean, it's just a matter of ears to listen, 'cause I hope we're not getting.
Yeah, I think you open the meeting and say, here's what we're discussing, and ask them for, if there's any way that's, or this, or this could happen, and see what they say.
'Cause I think even that point about what you're paying for our healthcare with the thirty five hour week is compared to the, you know.
So, and that version, so.
Well, that comes, it comes down, you know, to a seventy thousand dollar a year employee that's working thirty five hours a week is making almost a dollar an hour more than.
So anyway, that's, if you and Shirley do that, since you're already working with the union negotiations, I think that'd be great. If you're.
We'll work with you with our schedules.
You're our HR committee.
Okay, is there anything else? I entertain a motion for adjournment.
I have a motion to advance.
Thanks.
A motion and second for adjournment, Paul is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
You take the numbers of a family black.
System didn't work, I'll be back next week to sit back in meditation for two hours, 'cause I can't hear what's going on here. I don't care what your guy said about sitting in the back of the room being able to hear. When you embarrass people about a, a disability, you are the rudest male I have ever encountered. We'll call you an adult.
Elaine, the, the equipment did not work today?
Yeah.
Did it not work today?
No.
No, did this work at all?
I didn't use them all right here, it's, it's an example of magical thinking and grinning, look at that nice grinning. Dan, you are the rudest male adult I have ever encountered. And Steve, oh, break away. I've been here for almost two years, but all the people.
First I might to do that.
Oh, yes.
Next we.
Next we.
Thank you to the community for attending.
Everybody.
If you need any, so you can help us. Create a boat.
Eighteen to thirteen dollars.
And we can do it.
So that's what we're ADA coming with, right there.
She was using an air.